And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Councilmember Bowman.
Is it?
Councilmember Farallato.
Here.
Councilmember Galumbak.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Council President Pridgen.
Ikey.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Proten Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Can we do our pledge to the flag, please?
The Republic of America stands for the God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we are now joined by our chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Thank you, Council President. At different times, for me, different scriptures take on a depth of meaning and understanding that perhaps I didn't see or recognize in previous times. Over the last year, one of those scriptures that has been sort of a bedrock for me is a very simple scripture, James, Chapter 1, Verse 5. "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God. I could easily change that to say, because I regularly lack wisdom, I need to ask God for wisdom. Wisdom is even harder sometimes to find or to recognize when we're in times of uncertainty, waters that are choppy and storm ridden. And I think that's the time that all of us in our city find ourselves in. But it doesn't just say, if I lack wisdom, it says, if any of you lacks wisdom, you can ask God, and he'll give it generously without finding fault. It's an amazing time in the sense that for all of us, in every person who resides and lives in our precious city of Buffalo, every leader among us is in times where wisdom beyond our own is necessary to navigate these waters for so many who depend on us. My wisdom ran out a long time ago, my friends, but God has not. And so today, as we look to him to structure this meeting even, I believe any of you who need wisdom for the decisions to be made, he is more than generous to want to give it to you in great measure. Let's pray together. Father, thank you for your word. Thank you for James 1. Lord, for those on this call, for those that have tuned in, for those who are part of our precious city, who lack wisdom today in so many different ways, in employment, in education, as parents, as neighborhood residents, as leaders, in all kinds of different venues. Lord, for those of us who don't know always what to do or how to do it in uncertain times, we look to you, faithful Father, and ask for direction and guidance and wisdom. What's uncertain to me certainly is not to you, and I pray even today that as these deliberations take place amongst and between the common council members and others that will be part of this, that, Lord, you'd grace us with wisdom beyond our own insight and revelation. Help us to do what's best for those we're called to serve. Thank you for your powerful presence and more than enough of what we need. And we thank you for all that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, any memorials? Councilmember Galumbak.
Hi.
Councilmember Galumbak.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry, I'm having a computer glitch again. I wanted to put in memoriam Hassan Al-Khalil Golden, the brother of my friend Shaheed, who was a former coach with Little League Football in the Riverside neighborhood. He's going to be very, very sorely missed by his family. Also, James Doyle, a longtime Riverside resident. He's leaving behind his mom, Mrs. Doyle. They were Irish immigrants that came and lived in a big Irish enclave in Black Rock and Riverside. You hear that, Scanlon? We had a great deal of them when I was a young man, and he passed away last week. He's going to be very, very sorely missed by the Doyle family, as well as his friends from the Riverside community and the Wegmans community where he worked. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Lovejoy District lost a few members, including Dino Palumbo, who was a resident of the Lovejoy neighborhood on Gold Street. Palumbo family was a big family name in the Lovejoy neighborhood. Dino loved to garden and cook, his family tells me, and he'll be sorely missed. We also lost Paul Andruski, who lived to see 100 years old. So he lived a full life, a Kaiser Town resident of ours, and always active in the community and active with the church. And then also just like to mention, you know, the passing of Neil Dobbins, who actually lived in my district on Newburgh Street, and his sister worked in my office for many years. So we knew the work that Neil Dobbins did in MVP and across all of our districts. He worked tremendously hard to, you know, help the youth in our communities. I would see Neil across my district all the time, even probably more than he knew, and I saw him out there working. So I certainly appreciate his dedication to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I do agree, Councilmember Bowman, about Neil. I wasn't able to attend services, but we did send something from the council and was able to be with him last year before COVID at different events. And he was just so dedicated and not even having, I don't believe he had any small children at home anymore, but he cared about everybody else's children. And it's a huge, huge loss for our community. Also today, we funeralized Mary Walker, who was a committee person, was very committed over in the Jefferson Avenue area, her brother Luther Walker and other family members. But many will know Luther, who was very active in the community also. So we mourned her, and last week, they buried their brother. So a sister and a brother dies within two weeks of each other. And so we know that the Walker family needs our prayers, and so we recognize them. We always recognize our men and women who have given their life for the freedom of our country and for the freedom of others since our last meeting. We pause these chambers for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a special presentation by councilmembers Bowman and Wingo.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to start by just welcoming our representatives from the Navy here today. We have Vice Admiral Lisa Franchetti. She is the Director of Policy for the Joint Chiefs of Staff. And we also have Captain Gonzalez, who is the commanding officer of our state namesake, the USS New York. And so a welcome. And we did a proclamation here. All the council members had signed it, so I'll just read that briefly for you. "The City of Buffalo is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community. The U.S. Navy is instrumental in ensuring the safety and security of our shores while protecting countless imports and exports from New York State. Navy Weeks, celebrated in naval communities across the country, are signature outreach programs that strengthen community ties to the service. We, the members of the City of Buffalo Common Council, hereby proclaim that June 14th through June 20th, 2021, will be recognized as Navy Week in the City of Buffalo to acknowledge the enormous role of the heroes of the U.S. Navy and their contributions to our city, state, and nation." So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'd have, anyone wants to have words, Vice Admiral? Either?
Good afternoon, Council President Pridgen and councilmembers. I'm Lisa Franchetti. It's really a pleasure to be with you virtually. I wish I could be there in person. But I am pretty excited about your Navy Week and the opportunity to really engage with the greater Buffalo community. As you know, as was just mentioned, I'm serving currently on the staff of the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff as the Director of Strategy, Plans, and Policy. But more importantly than that, I am a proud upstate New Yorker, graduating from Pittsburgh Mendon High over in Rochester, New York, way back in 1981. I did want to have just a few minutes of your time just to say again, no matter how far you are from the coast in Buffalo, Buffalo is definitely a Navy town. Your Buffalo and Erie County Naval and Military Park is the largest inland Navy park in the United States, home to the four decommissioned naval vessels that have served their nation well. I know the park's mission really is to honor our veterans, the active-duty military, all the families, educate folks about the history, the service, and the sacrifice of our Navy, and inspire a sense of patriotism and appreciation for protecting the values that are enshrined in our Constitution. And the presence of the park and your commitment to Navy Week really speaks volumes about the support the Navy receives from the City of Buffalo. And I think even though this is a hybrid virtual live event, you are going to have a great time. It's a super opportunity for the people of Buffalo to meet sailors and learn a little bit about what our Navy's doing for you today. So I thought I would just take a few minutes to share with you the really critical role our Navy is playing in what is definitely a very complex and rapidly changing security environment. I think you just heard it in that proclamation, that many things have changed about what our Navy is doing today, but I would say that some things haven't changed. So since the Little Rock and the Sullivan's and the Croker and PTF-17 were in service, our Navy has always been a maritime nation. We always will be. And our security and prosperity definitely depend on our free access to the seas. For 245 years, your Navy has operated forward to protect commerce and keep all of the fights far from our shores. And I think when you step back and look at since the end of the World War II, we've sailed alongside like-minded navies, and together we've been able to provide stability. We've deterred great power war, we preserve peace, and we've ushered in prosperity for billions of people around the world. The vessels that you have there right in your midst, they have great stories, and they have all borne witness to that history. But just like these ships and the sailors that crewed them faced an uncertain future, really, so do we. And I think that the collective security that we've been enjoying, and in fact, indeed, our way of life, is now under threat. China and Russia are actively undermining the free and open conditions at sea that have benefited so many generations of Americans and really people around the world. So as I talk to you today, there are 296 ships, 68 submarines, and about 350,000 sailors serving all over the globe, on the sea, under the sea, in the air, on the land, in space, and in cyberspace. They are standing the watch around the clock to underwrite the freedoms that we all enjoy today. And our acquisition professionals are working hand in hand with industry to develop and design the new capabilities that we're going to need to deter, fight, and win in the future. I would tell you that today, your Navy is operating on the front lines of this strategic competition. I saw it every day during my time as a sixth fleet commander over there in Naples, Italy, responsible for operations in the European and African theaters. So let me just give you a quick, my top five list of the things that the Navy is doing for you and for our nation today. Number one, our Navy is protecting American prosperity. 90% of our trade moves on the ocean, and 90% of international data moves on undersea cables. Sea Power defends that prosperity. Number two, your Navy is protecting America's security. The joint force and our allies are relying on the Navy's warfighting capabilities and to keep access open to the sea lanes of communication. Sea Power protects the homeland, and it enables America's armed forces to get where they need to go and operate around the world. Number three, the Navy is protecting American values. Free and open access to the world's oceans advances the promise of a free and open international order. Sea Power protects those freedoms from those who would use intimidation to undermine international law. Number four, the Navy is protecting our future in America. I think a flexible force influences events abroad. It contributes to regional stability, and it preserves the future peace. And finally, number five, your Navy remains America's away team. We operate forward and ready to respond 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And as the global security situation goes more uncertain, being forward and present ensures we can assertively contest the challenges and infringe upon the seas. And from humanitarian assistance and disaster response to combat operations at sea and ashore, your Navy gives options to our national decision-makers to respond to a variety of crises. And when I talk about the Navy, I might be creating an image in your mind of gray-holed ships, black submarines, white airplanes, and multicolored cyber networks. But I'm really talking about a lot more than that. I'm talking about our sailors. The sailors who operate all that fantastic equipment, because really, without their talent, all of that capability can go nowhere and do nothing. I like to say that our sailors are our secret weapon. And after working with them for 35 years, I can tell you firsthand that this all-volunteer force is made up of America's finest sons and daughters and reflects the very fabric of our nation. You would be amazed to see the responsibility that we give to these young men and women every day and how they run with it, living up to our core values of honor, courage, and commitment, and embracing our attributes of integrity, accountability, initiative, and toughness. So when you meet our sailors this week, please take advantage of the opportunity to learn more about what they do and why they serve. And please encourage your best and brightest to check out the Navy and consider serving in the world's greatest Navy. I really want to thank you for your time today. Thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for supporting the Navy and for all you do for our sailors, the veterans, and their families. And I hope you have an absolutely fantastic Navy Week. And I did want to give just a minute to introduce you to Captain Javier Gonzalez, the commanding officer of the USS New York. Captain Gonzalez took command back on November 30th as the ship's ninth commanding officer. So Javier, congratulations on taking command of that fine warship. And I'd like to give you a few seconds to say something yourself as the ship's namesake for this Fleet Week.
Vice Admiral, thank you for the introduction and thank you to the councilmembers for giving me the opportunity to represent the good ship of the USS New York, the namesake of the state of New York. I'm very excited to be part of the Fleet Week, and I really appreciate the proclamation for the councilmembers on this year's Fleet Week. It's an exciting time. We have been doing Fleet Weeks for a while now, the Navy has, since back in 2012. We started doing Fleet Weeks for a good reason. We wanted to showcase what the Navy brings to our, the American citizens. And I think we will be doing a great job this year. Even though we're doing a lot of virtual engagements like this one, I think there is some, a series of events that are going to be extremely fascinating for the City of Buffalo, to include the airshow that is taking place by the Blue Angels on Saturday and Sunday. I think that's going to be extremely exciting for the City of New York. I say no more. I don't want to take any more of your time. I can tell you that I represent 358 sailors and Marines on board the USS New York. That anytime that we can represent the state of New York, they're very proud, very enthusiastic to be part of any of these events. So thank you for having me, and thank you again for the proclamation. This is USS New York. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you. I just want to say to Vice Admiral Franchetti and to Captain Gonzalez that I am indeed privileged to be able to hear you speak on today and to see some of the faces that keep our borders safe in land and sea and in air. So we just want to thank you for all of what you do. I don't think many of us who have not served can really comprehend the work that you do. It is literally unfathomable. It is incalculable. It is immeasurable. And we just want to tell you all, thank you. I just lost a minister of music at my church. He was in the Navy. He had to go down and assist his family, whose, his son, literally, was shipped out, and he went down to go assist his family. So to my guy minister, Ralph J. Fleming, if he's watching from where he is right now, just know this is for you too. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your time today. And Vice Admiral, thank you for everything that you've explained today and all of the words that you've shared with us. It was definitely inspiring. I don't think regular old citizens really know the sacrifices you all make being in the armed service. My daughter's in the armed service. My nephews are in the armed service. My brother, my father are in the armed service. And today, this month, June is actually PTSD month as well. And we have no idea as regular citizens, all of the trauma that you all have to face on a daily and regular basis to keep us safe and to protect our liberties. But from my mouth to your ears, thank you, and thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you, and thank you to all who are on. This is probably the highest ranking officer that we, or Navy person that we've ever had on, including Air Force and Army and anything else. So it was an honor to have you all on. Thank you. Next, do we have DeWitt Lee on the line? I can't see everybody, so I'm not sure. Is DeWitt Lee?
I am here, Mr. Council President.
Ah, you just showed up on my screen. DeWitt Lee, we are recognizing as we commemorate the 100th year commemoration of the Black Wall Street massacre. And I know that you are involved in the efforts and with the local chapter, I believe. And if you could, and so first of all, I want to thank you for being involved and bringing attention. This is something that has not been talked about around America very often. And so now to be at the 100th year, we want to applaud and thank and extend our appreciation to all for their contributions to recognize the 100th anniversary of the Tulsa massacre and honor this week as Black Wall Street Week here. And if you, for those who may be watching, for some that may be on, who don't understand what the Black Wall Street massacre was about, can you in just a few minutes, two minutes or less, just kind of reflect on that?
I will, and I want to just extend my deepest gratitude and thankfulness for this opportunity. I want to thank this city council for providing this platform to speak about the atrocities that took place 100 years ago. And for those who are not aware, 100 years ago, in Greenwood, which was recognized, this district as Black Wall Street, because of its thriving and prosperous business community, was attacked by a rabidist mob. That if you want to get an idea of what this threat looked like, just take a look at what took place at the Capitol Building in DC. This recklessness, this lawlessness, and this bloodthirsty fervor that filled the hearts of all those, many professionals, people who we entrust with our kids, whether it's school bus drivers or teachers or doctors, who found themselves being part of devastation. That 100 years ago, if that same kind of commitment to destruction was seen by the residents of Greenwood District known as Black Wall Street. And because of a rumor, because of, that was escalated through some press releases and through irresponsible media, a mob decided to destroy this prosperous black community by burning down the buildings on land and through air. I mean, they employed airplanes to drop bombs, and residents who were home were reading to their kids and cooking dinner, are attending movie theaters, were now all of a sudden under attack on American soil. So Americans destroying America, and it was a moment that has left a truly gap between the business community and their rightful place in this economy, not just in Tulsa, but around the world, because these are scare tactics. And, you know, we have yet to see this kind of prosperity of black businesses. We're talking about 34 blocks that were damaged. And every day during Black Wall Street Week, which is from May 31st to the 7th, we have actually have taken a 34-second moment of silence just to pay tribute to what has taken place. But the good news is that we have embraced this moment around the world to rejuvenate and to rediscover, you know, business communities and create an opportunity and a platform for businesses to thrive.
Thank you so much. And I never learned this in history class in school, and I think it's so important. So we will get to your proclamation, you and your organization, and thank you for everything that you do around the city. We really appreciate you.
Well, I truly thank you, and I don't know if this, would this be my last opportunity to share a word?
Yes, we have to move on with the council meeting, but if you have something very brief?
Yes, I will. Well, of course, I want to thank God. I want to thank, you know, our ancestors for the work, for laying the foundation for us to stand upon. I would like to thank the Black Wall Street Week team. Of course, Howard Johnson, the Honorable Howard Johnson, and the Honorable April Baskin, who produced a proclamation for us as well. And of course, to you, Council President, and the rest of your colleagues, thank you for stepping, taking this bold step with us. We are excited to accept this challenge as being the only Black Wall Street Week commemoration in the entire world. We also would like to pay tribute to what the Tulsa City Council has recommended. And they have not, they have did a little bit more than us, but rightfully so. They have dedicated from May 31st, 2021, to May 31st, 2022, as a year of commemoration, truth-telling, atonement, and healing. So we just wanted to thank Tulsa City Council for, you know, giving us this mandate. We are excited about cultivating a vibrant African-American business community here in Buffalo around the principles of prosperity that form these successful black business communities that happen in this country under the worst times ever, Jim Crow laws and landlust, which created opposition and intimidation, which stifled dreams of creating generational wealth. Today, we unite in Buffalo to create a rejuvenated Black Wall Street here. And with the support of CNR Housing, which is located at the historical 230 Pratt Building, have provided us with a hub, a hub for black innovation and enterprise. And we are building great momentum behind a petition to rename Pratt from Genesee to William Street as Black Wall Street. And we look for your help and cooperation in making this happen. We have honored several black businesses with the Black Wall Street Week awards, including the Challenger and Vision Multimedia Group. But I just wanted to share this piece of history with you before I go. This is an actual proclamation from the Common Council of the City of Buffalo from 1978. And this was actually paying tribute right here to one of the greatest businesswomen's minds that this city has ever had the privilege of calling one of its own. And they extended their sympathy in memoriam for Miss Anna Montgomery Woodson of the Little Harlem Hotel, which here in your beloved and our beloved African-American Heritage Quarter is a plaque. So she is going to be our honoree, our 2021 Black Wall Street Week honoree. And I just want to share this piece of history with you all, which includes the names of, you know, Mr. Herb Bellamy and James Pitts, Anthony Masalino, and so many more. So we want to thank you, Common Council, for continuing to honor our ancestors and those doing things in our present day. Thank you.
Thank you, DeWitt. And can we have a copy of that? Because that's when they used to do it by calligraphy.
Yes, sir, of course.
We don't do it like that anymore. So I would love to have that and frame it. And so thank you.
A shame.
I see. Is Star Valentino on the call? All right.
So I'll trade you then. I'll trade you. I'll give, I'll trade you a copy of that for the proclamation.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, the Common Council is recognizing Star Valentino for Do Something Good for Your Neighbor Day, which is a nationwide effort observed in thousands of cities across the United States to celebrate neighborly love and kindness. And so we wanted to reckon, I see his, I see his, I see he's on, but if you can unmute Star, if you're there?
Can you hear me?
Okay, now we can hear you. Whereas the vision of Uh, whereas the vision of do something good for your neighbors for millions of people to show selfless love, compassion, acts of charity toward our fellow neighbors, I dare is Friggin proclaim May sixteen, twenty twenty-one is do something good for your neighbor day in the city of Buffalo and join along and encourage residents of all ages, cultures, religions and all economic backgrounds to participate by spreading random acts of kindness throughout all the neighbors of the city. And thank you so much, sir, uh, for being the founder in Atlanta, Georgia in two thousand nine. You have the floor for a few uh minutes uh of comment, if you'd like.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President Darius Priggin. I appreciate this honor. Uh, I, I honor you, I respect you and I look up to you. So this is a huge honor for me, you know, coming to you. Uh, for those who don't know, just as a quick update, uh, on May sixteenth, cities all across America was uh landmarks were lit up purple on behalf of this day. From Hawaii to Florida, uh, you name it, man. It was totally amazing. But I would, I would like to thank uh the County Executive Office of Mark Polinar for lighting up the old county hall building. I would like to thank uh Mitch Nowinski for uh assisting to get the Buffalo City Hall Dome that purple and as well as uh Niagara Falls. Uh, so the city of Buffalo has always been a part of all of the things that I've been putting together for this initiative. And I would like to thank uh Governor Andrew Cuomo for recognizing this day for five straight years, as well as County Executive Mark Polinar. Uh, I really have to show them love because they invited me down to their office and I had a nice conversation with those guys. So I really appreciate them uh standing behind this initiative. And uh, I just like to say, uh, let's continue to spread neighborly love here in the city of Buffalo and beyond.
Wow, thank you so much. And, and this, it's just refreshing to hear. Um, and I think we are all dedicated to do that. I hope so in one way or another. Thank you, Star. Appreciate you, man.
Thank you.
All right. Have, I know that uh those who are watching, our meeting has started out with a lot of accolades. Uh, but there was a woman by the name of Felka McCall, who used to sign off her radio show. And she would say, it's nice to be nice. And so thank you to all the council members for just being nice to our constituents. All right, one emotion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon. The minutes of stated meeting held on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one are approved. Council members, the late files are before you. Um, are there any objections to any of the late files? Seeing no objections, we will hear the entire agenda before us. And we know that we have at least one item majority leader that's coming out of.
Yes, Mr. Chair, a motion to take item twenty from C D out of order.
Second by Council Member Noah Kowski.
Item twenty, disposition of real property, thirty Bud Mill Drive.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion open the public hearing, second by Council Member Paul. Public hearing, is there anyone here to be heard on this item?
Uh, Council President Scott Billman from the Urban Renewal Agency.
It's Mr. Billman, Attorney Billman, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, council members. Uh, this item seeks uh permission to transfer a landlocked parcel located at thirty Bud Mill, owned by uh Urban Renewal Agency to Enviro World LLC. Uh, the location of the parcel is in the Bailey Central Avenue, Liam Street area. It's commercially zoned. Like I said, it is landlocked, but Enviro World does own some of the contiguous parcels. And uh, they're a Canadian company uh that distributes compost bins. And so I think they're going to use that as a warehouse location and a transportation location. Uh, the purchase price, we uh, we got a letter of value of approximately fifty-five hundred. The justification for the two thousand dollar purchase price is that the seller, um, sorry, the buyer is going to pick up all the closing costs and all the title work. And the title work includes, there is a railroad track, CSX track easement that runs right across this landlocked parcel. And it really has no value until someone negotiates with CSX and you remove that easement so it can be developed. So this buyer is going to take all that cost on. When you include all those costs that they're bearing, the difference between the valuation, the sales price, it, the evaluation is, is, is going to be covered even more so by the cost that they're in. Uh, the Bureau Board approved this item, believe it or not, back in January twenty twenty. Uh, right before everything kind of slowed down for everyone. And so now I think that it's a hopeful sign that Enviro World is ready to move forward with the transaction. And we're in a place where we can close this um parcel, take it again off of the Bureau inventory, move it on to the tax rolls, uh, consistent with what we've been doing over the last couple of years.
Thank you, sir. Um, anyone else? The District Council member, did you have anything want to say on this?
I did that. We can motion to approve.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, second by Council Member Noah Kowski.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Council Member Galumba. All right, from the top.
Uh, roll call, Council Member Bowman.
Yes.
Council Member Farallato.
I'm sorry, he's having computer issues. He's trying to transfer it to the phone, so we'll come back.
Council Member Glomback?
Yeah.
Council Member Noah Kowski?
Yes.
Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Council Member Rivera?
Yes.
Council Member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council Member Wingo?
Yes.
Right, it passes and um, um, I'm not sure if Councilman Freiletta was back with us yet on the phone.
Yeah.
There, there, there says yes. So uh, just so the public knows, we do have two, several council members that are having some uh computer issues, but um, so if you see them on and off, that, that is the, the reason. All right. Councilmember Freiletta?
Yeah, if I can just add, we, I signed into the meeting, I was live on Zoom and then at, at two twenty-five, the Spectrum cable went out and I, that's my internet and I received a text message from Spectrum that they have a service outage here where I am in North Buffalo until four thirty. So that's why I'm not appearing live because of Spectrum's outage during the middle of the day.
Well, I'm sure your constituents appreciate that uh update on Spectrum's outage. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Right. Are we ready to go from the top? Thank you, us, um, Attorney Billman.
Thank you, council members. Have a good afternoon.
You also. From the top.
Item number one, eighty-two, eighty-four, eighty-eight, ninety Monroe Street, designated developer agreement, King Solomon Holiness Church.
Motion to send to C D.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number two, reported sale, forty-two Gatchel.
Motion to approve.
Um, do, do, we know what the move is going to be on three, because then we could take two through four?
Refer to the council member and Wingle.
Uh, commit.
All right, so we'll just deal with item two right now. Motion to approve, uh, second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glomback?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noah Kowski?
Yeah.
Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item number three, reported sale, one ninety-two Wakefield.
Let's go back to committee. You have to do roll call for the previous motion for approval.
She just did it.
Absolutely.
Next, next item. Next item.
Did we get a second on number three?
No, you would finish reading it.
Item number three, reported sale, one ninety-two Wakefield.
It's sent to committee.
Motion to go is going to C D. Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number four, reported sales, four one.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glomback?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noah Kowski?
Yeah.
Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item number five, appoint general planner.
Bring it up on the screen, please.
Motion to send uh items five and six to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Galumba.
Item seven, April twenty twenty-one cash flow report.
Motion to send item seven eight to finance.
Second by Councilmember Fearlet.
Item nine, certificate of appointment.
Motion to send civil service.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item ten, change order, Broadway Market.
Motion to approve items ten through fourteen.
Second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glomback?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noah Kowski?
Yeah.
Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item fifteen, notification cereals.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item sixteen, permission to hire TY Lynn.
Motion to approve items sixteen through twenty-two.
Second by Councilmember Fearlet.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yeah.
Councilmember Galumbak?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noah Kowski?
Yeah.
Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, food store license, twenty-one eighty-three Genesee.
Motion to make a station.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item twenty-four, food store license, seven seven six, um, one.
Uh, motion to approve items twenty-four, twenty-five is in North District. So I don't know if the council member would like to approve that as well.
We can approve that as well, Mr. uh Rivera.
Uh, so motion to approve items twenty-four through twenty-nine.
Through twenty-nine, second by Councilmember Glomback.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glomback?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noah Kowski?
Yeah.
Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item thirty, liquor license notices.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Item thirty-one, certificates of appointment, temporary provisional permanent.
Motion to send to civil service items thirty-one and thirty-two.
Second by uh President Pro Tem.
Item thirty-three, appoint legislative aide.
Motion to with that.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item thirty-four, assisting Jerry Daniels Junior in removing vacant and abandoned homes on Carlton Street.
Motion to send to C D.
Second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Item thirty-five, common council meeting transcriptions.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Galumba.
Item thirty-six, American Rescue Plan funding concerns.
Motion to send to the Education Committee.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Mr. Chair, I may just.
Councilmember Bowman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to uh mention that this item was submitted by the urban think tank. And um, it's, it's really just talking about the stimulus funding that will be received. And um, you know, trying to have input. I just wanted to clarify that we're going to have uh this item at our education committee next Tuesday at eleven A M. Um, our intentions aren't to, you know, usurp any power. The council does not vote directly on this funding and how it's spent. Uh, but some members of the community had wanted to voice their input. We felt it was relevant to have this item on the education committee. So we accommodated everyone's schedule and we're going to have it at the education committee meeting next Tuesday at eleven. Uh, we expect the superintendent's office to be there. And uh, you know, we work in collaboration with them and they do attend our committees regular, regularly. So uh, looking forward to hearing more on this item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I know we talked about it before the meeting and soon as we got off, one of the news agencies called to ask, will we be add, adding oversight? And I had to explain to them that by law, this council cannot have oversight over Board of Education's money. And that what you were giving was the pulpit, basically, uh, at least for them to be heard and um, and try to work together with the school board, but we do not, and I want to be clear. By law, New York State law does not allow this council to make the Board of Education do anything with their funding or anything else. That's why they have a, a school board. So just make people to know that. Now, the money coming to the city is a different thing. All right, thank you, sir. Next item.
Item thirty-seven, special use permit, seventy-four Jones.
Motion to send that to legislation city board, items thirty-seven through forty.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item forty-one, petition to repave Ashua Ave.
Motion sent to legislation.
Uh, second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Submission, civil service, item number one, appoint real estate maintenance manager.
Motion is to receive and file items one through and including seventeen.
Second by Councilmember Rivera, majority.
Finance, item eighteen, public comment on recommended budget fiscal year twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, the mo- um, Councilmember Rivera, can you call it up?
A motion to receive and file items eighteen and nineteen.
Second by Councilmember Galumbak.
Legislation, item twenty-one, ordinance amendment, article twenty, budgeting.
Motion is to approve.
Uh, second by majority.
Uh, hello, hands up.
Yeah, I can't see you. I, I only see four people. Councilmember Wingo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, there was a motion. Do we, do we second the motion already?
Um, was it seconded, clerk? Is right.
I, I believe you started to say seconded by Rivera.
Yes.
So was it second, the motion to approve was second already?
Yes.
Can you, can you record me at the negative only because uh amendments were made to this document as early as right before the meeting? And that's just not a lot of time to, you know, kind of consider such a very, very important. I know that uh my colleagues have put a lot of time and effort into this. I want to commend council members, uh, Noah Kowski and Bowman and Rivera for taking the time to meet with the comptroller's office to ensure that there was a document that uh they believed was uh feasible. However, uh, because I got the most latest and recent document right before this meeting, uh, even uh, I got a document at seven fifty-one last night. I want to make sure that we are doing everything over. And because this isn't going to be put into effect, put into effect until uh next year's fiscal uh year. Now, I don't know what the uh rush is for us to not get it right the first time. I was trying to make sure that uh we all wa- was aware of that. But again, this is nothing against all of the work and the labor intensive uh research that my colleagues, uh, Mitch Noah Kowski and Brian Bowman put into this and David Rivera put into this uh, this policy. But uh, just because I just got the information, the most recent information, uh, just right before this meeting, uh, record me at the negative.
So noted.
Um, this is Assistant Corporation, Council Karen Gordon. Um, council member, is it okay for me to? I just, I had a conversation a little bit earlier with Councilmember Noah Kowski. Um, Councilmember Noah Kowski and I, along with Councilmember Bowman and the comptroller's office, I've been working on this for quite a while now. It's been, we've put in a, they have put in a lot of work on it. Um, I think up until, you know, most recently this morning and last night, you know, we were all working on this, the additional edits that has not made it into the final version that you're looking at right now. I know Councilmember Wingo mentioned one that he received last night, but. But up until this morning, edits were also being made. I have had a discussion with Councilmember Bowman. Noakowski, I'm sorry, prior to the meeting. And I think he did express some willingness to do something, although Ben brought it on it right away. And today, I will let him speak for himself, but just, you know, letting the council know that we have continued to work on it, but have been additions that have been made on it and edits that have been made on it today. That is not currently before the council at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporation Council. Yeah, there's, you know, since there's multiple sponsors, Mr. Chair, on this, you know, I can't speak for my whole, all of, you know, the sponsors on this. As, you know, one council member did note that it doesn't go into effect till next year. So other council members, but including the ones that are sponsors, could also submit amendments to fix anything that they can almost until next week. This document will not take effect until next year legislatively, how we move forward. I don't find any problems, you know, approving this, this document right now and in the sense of, you know, submitting future amendments next Tuesday. Because this, this is, you know, how we can, we can amend to move forward. But I would allow my other, my other colleagues to speak.
Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. And just kind of, yeah, reiterate that. I totally understand. But this document, we held it up or had let it age. I believe this is the second time now. And there had been so much input, which was warranted on a document of this importance and really just wanting to get it right. So I fully understand my colleagues', you know, thoughts on that, Councilmember Wingo. And I am too opening, open to, you know, future amendments. You said, as you said, it doesn't go into effect until next year. But at this point, I think, you know, we've really dug deep and tried to include every, you know, agency we could think of and every partner in government. And I'm pretty proud of the document we have, but I fully understand. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Mr. Scanlon had his hand.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President. I know this has been said before, but I also wanted to commend the most recent members of the council, Councilmember Noakowski and Councilmember Bowman in particular, for, you know, an issue that we've been facing for some time now. And really dug down deep into this and it produced a wonderful piece of legislation. So I do want to commend them and thank them for all their hard work.
We agree. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let me thank the Controller's Office as well. It was the Controller's Office that sent us their idea with regards to the fund balance policy. It was, it was, I think it was first Controller was Schroder, and then after that, Vanessa, who was acting in the capacity and Controller Barbara Miller-Williams as well. We've met with the auditors. We've met with the administration. We've met with, I'm trying to think of almost governmental accounting standard people who advise us and what kind of language to use. We spent a lot of time back and forth and stayed in our lane, as I said yesterday. We understand the powers of the administration, the powers of the Controller's Office and the powers of this body. And we try to work within that. As you said before, I mean, no document is perfect. We can amend, we can change, we can modify, we can improve. I think this document is good. It's going to help us to work within a framework when it comes to budgeting. It's important that we work within a framework that tells us this is, we have to replenish our reserve fund. I think each one of us, whether it's in our personal capacity or other capacity that we have, we understand the need to have a reserve fund for different things that may occur unexpectedly. We've been fortunate in the past to have a reserve fund that we can use to kind of close budget gaps. But we don't have that any longer. So we have to get back to making sure that we have a reserve fund that we can leave to future council and future administrations. So this is not just for this administration and this council. This is for future council members as well. So I want to commend Brian Bowman and Mitch Noakowski and the Finance Chair, Rashid Wyatt. I don't, I want to give him credit for what he has done as well. And I want to thank all the council members for this important, Ulysses Wingo as well. He sat in on one of our last meetings. And, you know, we welcome his input and certainly we want to make sure if he has any concerns, we can address those in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this is a huge leap and a, what many of our auditors have called for. And down the line, of course, because it won't go into effect until next year, we find other things that need to be dusted off. I dotted or T crossed will make that happen. Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, I did forget to thank our Comptroller, Comptroller Barbara Miller-Williams and Deputy Comptroller Delano Dow for inviting me to the meeting to actually include this member of the Finance Committee. I would like to say I do appreciate that and they, they did listen. I watched and witnessed how both sides expressed their individual opinions and gave their input. And we came up with this document collectively. We coalesced around an end goal and this is the result. Only reason why I cannot vote for this document is because I don't think it's good government to put something into action that none of us, all of us have had the opportunity, have not had the opportunity to deliberate on and process. I mean, if that was the case with this principled approach, we might as well approve every document that we have in every committee and just amend it later. And that's just not the approach I think that we want to take. But at the same time, this is a document, again, I did speak with the Controller's Office as latest today, who informed me that they are satisfied with this document. I can live with it. I just can't vote on it on the principle that all of the colleagues have not seen the most recent iteration of this document. Other than that, again, the sentiment of this talk right here was to ensure that I did, in fact, thank the Comptroller's Office for inviting this member of the Finance Committee to this common council, to that meeting to ensure that we had a document that at least these two branches of government can agree on. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yes.
Councilmember Galmbach?
He said yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
No.
All right, item passes.
Item twenty-two, special use permit two forty-four Allen for Tavern and N two C zone.
If Councilman Fairlott may be having phone problems.
I'm sorry, Council President, I was on mute there. He asked me to fill in calling all these items. The motion is to approve with conditions, items twenty-two and twenty-three.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yes.
Councilmember Galmbach?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item twenty-four, special use eighteen ninety-three Niagara Street for Tavern and Outdoor Dining.
This item is marked currently without recommendation. It is in the North District.
We have, do we know what?
Special use permit.
Just, I think somebody's on mute.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to send this one back to committee. There's a couple of smaller issues that we are working on in regards to it.
So to.
Motion is to recommit.
Second by councilmember Galmbach. And before you call off item twenty-five, do we know what the motion is going to be for twenty-six?
It's going to be a recommit.
Okay. Item twenty-five, call.
Item twenty-five, special instrument thirty-six Laurel for non-owner occupied short-term rental.
Motion is to approve.
Second by councilmember Rivera.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato?
Yes.
Councilmember Galmbach?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, special use permit nineteen eleven Seneca for tobacco establishment.
Motion is to recommit.
Motion recommit, second by majority leader Rivera.
Item twenty-seven, local landmark four thirty-six Amber Street.
Motion is to approve items twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Second by councilmember Noah Kowski.
Mr. President?
Councilmember Galmbach.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just very briefly, both of these properties are owned by local residents, Mark Vinnyak and his sister. They have requested and worked with the community to get these historically designated. It was a pleasure to work with them. It took a little bit longer because there were a couple of little issues that crept up over the past few months. But I think this is a win-win for the, for the owners, for the Black Rock Grant Amherst neighborhood. And if anybody is in the neighborhood, if they're stopping at Topster Wegmans just across the street, and one of these two buildings is the Black Rock Historical Society. And you're more than welcome to stop in there and take a look at the history of Black Rock Riverside and the environment. I want to thank my colleagues for assisting in this matter as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Galmbach. I was having a conversation with Councilmember Noakowski yesterday. And I said, the one thing about Councilmember Galmbach that you never have to guess on is about landmark and preservation. He has, he has a record of one hundred percent. And I picked up my phone and I told him, I said, if they say, let's landmark this home, Joseph Galmbach, Jr. is going to say yes. So thank you for your commitment to that. It's very important. Next item.
Resolutions, item forty-two, move one ninety three way from waterfront to rail bed.
This item is open.
Councilmember Galmbach?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, being that my birthday is February second, Groundhog Day, it's one of my favorite movies. And this resolution harkens back to that movie. If you remember in that movie, Bill Murray ends up living the same day over and over and over and over again. Well, if you remember, I kept putting in after every school board election that this council would go on record to move the school board elections from May until November. And it was finally approved after, I think, twelve or fifteen years. I can't remember the exact number. Well, deja vu all over again, as Yogi Berra would say. In the late nineteen fifties, when cities across the country were being destroyed of the beautiful urban fabric and fiber, when the east side was being ripped apart, when part of the west side was being ripped apart. People sometimes forget that the Black Rock and Riverside neighborhood, Riverside was called Riverside because it was beside the river. Black Rock, of course, was the rock that was in the river, much more on our west side now. But over time, it sort of migrated into the Amherst Street neighborhood. Well, the horrendous thing that happened to my community at that time was, was that Washington DC and their great forward thinking decided that they were going to rip away our waterfront access. And they put a throughway to cut off our waterfront access. Riverside Park became Throughway Park, you know, for all intents and purposes. There's a great picture and I was looking for it because I wanted to share it, but I can't find it. But it's from the old Riverside Review from around nineteen fifty-nine. And there's six gentlemen wearing black carrying a coffin. And in the coffin, it says, our waterfront access. So this horrible mistake was made in the late nineteen fifty's that ripped my community, ripped Buffalo, the northwest corner of Buffalo away from the waterfront, which had been our vibrant history. From the days of the neutrals and the Senecas and the French and the English and colonial period and so on. And just like that, we were ripped away from it. Well, there's been a lot of talk about our waterfront in different parts of the city of Buffalo. And I must say that I get frustrated because sometimes it seems like we forget the forgotten waterfront, Black Rock and Riverside. I see that now there's some changing of hearts in regards to the Skyway and some other developments around the city of Buffalo. I would like to propose and I would hope that my colleagues would vote for this. And I hate doing a late file. I very, very rarely do late files. But this is literally the exact same resolution that we've approved in the past. I think that this is timely to be in front of us, to call on our representatives at the federal level, who have been generally supportive, but I need more support in Black Rock Riverside. You know, I want Congressman Brian Higgins to help us move this throughway. There was a plan in the late nineteen eighties to move the throughway away from the waterfront and to put it along the rail bed corridor roughly beginning at Forest Avenue and roughly ending at Sheridan Drive. This would open up parts of the west side, Black Rock, Riverside and the old town part of Tonawanda to the water, just like it had been opened up prior to nineteen fifty-nine. You know, I'm having this sent to our representatives at the state and the federal level. I would hope that they would very, very seriously consider supporting this and looking at moving that throughway. Yep, you know, the throughway is a convenience for me. I can get downtown in, you know, about ten minutes from my house. I would much prefer to have waterfront access and an additional five minutes to get downtown. You know, it would completely change, you know, the complete, you know, sense of the Black Rock and Riverside neighborhood. And it would be like Back to the Future, taking us back to Black Rock, taking us back to Riverside. So if hopefully this gets approved today, I want to thank my colleagues for being supportive. And as I mentioned before, Mr. Higgins, please tear down this throughway.
Thank you, Councilmember Galmbach. Thank you for the history. Did we get a motion to adopt? Pardon me?
What's the motion? Would you like?
Councilmember Galmbach?
I think Karen Gordon, it would be an adoption.
Yes. So motion to adopt?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Second by councilmember Galmbach.
Item forty-three, Home Rule Request to Pass Senate Bill S five one one five.
Motion to adopt.
Second by councilmember Noakowski.
Item forty-four, ordinance amendment, chapter two sixty-one, lead paint hazard.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by councilmember Noakowski.
Item forty-five, call for the property owners of one forty-eight, one fifty Riley Street to appear.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by councilmember Wingo. On this item, and we are researching on whether this is already in court. We know that now the city court is starting to open back up. I tell you, I'm willing to do anything to get somebody's property owners in front of somebody. It is atrocious. Yesterday, I spent time in the district, again, on Southampton and on other streets. And, I mean, I do understand the public's frustration and, you know, I have heard people say, why isn't, you know, the council doing anything? Why isn't administration? Well, to be very honest, we are. But we're doing it within the confines of what we can. And inspections and then it goes to court. One of the biggest problems that we're experiencing, for instance, one house that I had put a slumlord sign up. And now the neighbors tell me that the person sold it allegedly to an LLC. So now we have no person. We have a corporate veil. And, you know, a person can get four or five LLCs. So you end up almost never being able to really track them down until they get to court and then a lawyer shows up. And I just say, you know, that this is, this is a shame. So I am going to, we are going to research it. But we have to find ways to get these landlords, many of who do not live in the city of Buffalo. You got an entire street of different streets. I think all of our districts have some, some area in which there are people and they're still doing it to today, buying a property, changing it in people's names once the inspection service gets on them, changing it in LLCs once they get to court. And it's, it's a crying shame. And if I didn't think Facebook would bleep me out, I'd probably say some other words or take us down. So it's bad. And it, so that's why I'm. So it's bad. And it, so that's why I'm now just trying anything I can. We did the slumlord signs. We are now saying, come, come, come before us. Because these are properties that don't have a gutter down. These are properties falling in. And nobody wants to live next to that. Nobody. And I've experienced it on North Hampton where property owner from New York, I called a man over and over and over, oh, I'm going to do this, but no grass cut, nothing done. Thank God, he just sold it to a neighbor. And work is starting to be done. But I feel the frustration of our constituents, as I know every council member does. And so this is just another way of, we're going to test it and see if it works. So thank you. Next item.
Item forty-six, Councilmember Wyatt, excused from meeting.
Second by majority, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was about to make you the second. Second by Councilmember Galumbach.
Item forty-seven, Home Rule to Pass Assembly eighty twenty-six, Senate seventy-two oh nine, granting active retirement, Kari O'Horn.
This is a late file.
All right, this is a late file, but it is, we just asked for adoption and Councilmember Wingo is asked to be added to this resolution. Councilmember Wingo, I see your hand. It was just to add?
Yep, just to add.
So this is, thank you. And so this is the home rule that will go immediately to the Assembly and to the Senate to hopefully begin the process of granting the retirement to Kari O'Horn as suggested by, by the court. And this is needed by our Assembly and by our Senate. I believe Assembly Majority Leader Crystal People Stokes is carrying it in the Assembly. And Kennedy, Senator Kennedy, is carrying it in the Senate. And as we know, we only have days. So thank you all for not objecting to the late file so that we can get this to Albany immediately. Councilmember Rivera?
Mr. Chair, can you include me in that I supported her being made whole way back before the decision came down? And I'm glad the decision came down in her favor. It's unfortunate she had to go through all those years of having to live and survive without a pension like everybody else. So I'm happy to see it. I hope she's made completely whole. And I congratulate her for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Add Councilmember Rivera to the home rule message. All right, Councilmember Wingo?
Yeah, I wasn't going to comment on it, but Councilmember Rivera's comments just kind of prompted me to just say what I was going to say, which is, it's unfortunate that she had to endure this hardship. But it's fortunate for everyone behind her. So now that these things, if it should ever happen again, there's going to be something in place that would ensure that justice comes to folks behind her. So I'm happy for her on today. I'm happy for her should the state Assembly and Senate pass this home rule for us and sure that she gets her pension. Thank you.
Absolutely. And our fingers are crossed and our prayers are there. We don't know what's going to happen on the other side, but at least this council has gone, is going on record to support that and send the home rule message. So thank you all. Next item.
Item forty-eight, Ordinance Amendment, Section thirteen dash twenty-one.
Motion sent to legislation.
Send to legislation, second by Councilmember Wingo, who has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that I am in support of the right to know. Thank you, Council President Pridgen, for actually drafting the legislation and presenting it. I asked if I could be a co-sponsor for this legislation and you conceded. So thank you, sir, for that. And to the community, we know that we have a lot more work to do. These are just the steps that we promised that we would take since the reform agenda went to the governor. And we will continue in the work. We will not cease in the work. So just continue to be patient with us. Don't let your foot off the gas, so to speak. And we will continue to make sure that the people's business is done. Thank you.
Only if you're in a school zone should you let your foot off the?
Wait a minute now, when you brought that up, I didn't bring that up. If you're in a school zone, slow your ass down. Thank you very much. And look, and I don't think all of the, you know, you made a comment earlier, Council President Pridgen, regarding the, 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 the words that you wanted to use. I don't think that Facebook would censor us with all of the other things out there, Mr. President. I don't think they will censor. If somebody says, "Slow your ass down," I don't think nobody would censor it. But that's what we need to do. That's what the folks in the city of Buffalo need to do. We all need to slow down in every zone in the city of Buffalo. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, okay. Make sure you add Councilmember Wingo's name to that, to forty-eight. All right, next item.
Item forty-nine, Request for U.S.-Canadian Border to be reopened.
Motion to adopt items forty-nine and fifty.
Motion to adopt forty-nine and fifty. And I think, Councilmember Rivera, did you ask to be on this?
Yes, please.
Yes, please add Councilmember Rivera. I know that we, you know, we're not the federal government. We're not state government, but we are still government. And these borders are in, part of the border is in the city of Buffalo. And I think that we need to send a clear message out to those who will have to negotiate that the city of Buffalo's common council is supporting open the border backup. So thank you all.
Item fifty-one, Elmwood Square Apartments.
Motion to approve items fifty-one and fifty-two.
Second by Councilmember Galumbach.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glumbach?
He said, he said yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item fifty-three, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter ninety-six, Bonds and Contracts, Living Range.
I'm sorry, which item was that? Oh, fifty-three, Go on the ledge.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item fifty-four, Wave Event Fees for Music in the Park.
Motion to approve items fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven.
Second by President Proton Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glumbach?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Item fifty-eight, Commissioner of Deeds.
To adopt, second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item fifty-nine, Supporting For the People Act.
This item is open.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we, we want to show our support for supporting the People Act, which consists of legislation that is currently in Congress that will open the door for sustainable progressive change on many fronts that will empower the people of this, of this great country. Buffalo, we should pass this resolution, will be one of the first municipalities to show their support for this sweeping legislation. So I'm hoping that we could all go and read H R one, S one, the For the People Act, so, so we can all show our support for this resolution to be sent to Congressman Higgins and Senators Gillibrand and Senator Chuck Schumer. Majority Leader Chuck Schumer, thank you.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second by Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Item sixty, Wave Fees for Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glumbach?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Ready? That's the last item in front of us, correct?
Correct.
Announcements, Ms. Writ?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, following Civil Service at ten AM. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at one o'clock PM. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, June fifteenth, at two o'clock PM. Committee on Education, Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at eleven o'clock AM.
All right, thank you. Are there any announcements for district councilmembers? Hearing, I'm seeing no hands. Majority Leader?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, I was trying to get my, my, anyway. On June the eighteenth, from four PM to seven PM, Buffalo Collegiate will be sponsoring a vaccination drive. That will be over on Halbert and Leroy, right over by the CAO building. I am asking that everyone in the area, if you've not been able to get to somewhere close to you, if you live in the former Central Park community or neighborhood where the Central Park Shopping Plaza used to be, I'm asking that you just take the quick walk over, take the quick bike ride over, take the little short drive over and get vaccinated this month on the eighteenth, between the hours of four and seven PM. And again, this is Buffalo Collegiate. David Polowski is the head of schools there. And my wife and I will be there. And we're asking everyone in the community to please join us and get vaccinated on that date. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Galumbach? You're on mute, sir. Still on mute. I think you're with us. Nope, still on mute. You're showing on Zoom that you are not. Now, now we can hear you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wingo, for bringing up your comments in your district because I forgot at about quarter to two, I got a phone call from the Northwest Buffalo Community Center that there is going to be another pop-up vaccination center this Friday. We don't have the specific times yet, but it will be at the Northwest Buffalo Community Center on Lawn Avenue. I'm going to assume it's between roughly nine and four this Friday. I still have a large number of people, especially new immigrants in the neighborhood. I've already been in touch with some of my Burmese community to let them know and to please get the message out there. Because I really would like to continue to boost up the numbers in my, in my council manic district, especially in the one four two oh seven. So if there is anyone that is in need of their first vaccination this Friday at Northwest Buffalo Community Center, the state is doing a pop-up vaccination center. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think some of, some of our districts are competing with the scratching backs. And we get mimosa and get a glass of beer if you get it. So I think people are going over to some of those places, but these places are in the community. And we encourage people to go to those community centers and go to those areas. Thank you all. I think we were on a second. Anybody else before I go? All right, second by Councilmember Nowakowski that we adjourn. Thank you all. Have a great day.